Call the meeting to order for the Waukesha County Council Legislative Session 2018-19 for August 21st, 2018. Those that would like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and pledge allegiance, please do.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. Give us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And as we hasten to the devotion of the living people, the promised kingdom, the power, and the glory of the Lord. For you are the citizens of the United States of America, and to your Republic, whose name is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda, entertain a motion to approve the legislative minutes from August 7th, 2018.
So moved.
Second?
Check.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from July 17th, 2018 in reference to the road dedication policy.
So moved.
Second?
Check.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from July 17th, 2018 in reference to animal ordinances.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from July 17th, 2018 in reference to the Poplar Hill facility.
So moved.
Second?
Check.
Any corrections? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Good morning, Mrs. Hurley.
Good morning, Council President, Council Members, ladies and gentlemen. I have a couple of housekeeping matters to announce this morning. The first is to remind everyone that the city of Salisbury will be starting setting up the National Folk Festival the week of September the 4th. September the 4th is our next county council meeting, so there will be limited parking outside. My understanding is that the back parking lot will still remain open, but parking on North Division Street from Route 50 to Main Street will be closed. The other item is Resolution Number 06, 2018, before the Urban Services Commission will be postponed to a meeting in September. This morning, looking at the agenda, we have several appointments, or reappointments, I should say. The first is several reappointments to the Tourism Board. And in accordance with the Charter, Section 315, the Director of Administration has submitted to the county council for confirmation several names for reappointment to the Tourism Board. Each individual will be considered by a separate resolution, which are shown on the agenda's items number two through seven. The Tourism Board acts in advisory capacity to the Director of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism, and makes recommendations with respect to policies, plans, goals, budget, sales, and marketing practices, objectives, and programs for the promotion and management of tourism, issues related to the industry segment, or tourism issues at large, and reviewing the tourism budget in advisory manner. Starting with Resolution Number 83, 2018, confirming the reappointment of Edward W. Urban to Waukesha County Tourism Board. And we do have Mr. Strasberg here, if there are any questions.
Thank you. Entertain a motion to approve Resolution 83, 2018.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? I know Mr. Urban's been doing a great job for a lot of years, so it's good to see him reappointed. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, Resolution 83, 2018, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 84, 2018, confirming the reappointment of Michael E. Getze to the Waukesha County Tourism Board.
Entertain a motion to approve Resolution 84, 2018.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 85, 2018, confirming the reappointment of Michael Delano to the Waukesha County Tourism Board.
Entertain a motion to approve Resolution 85, 2018.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
He's here.
Yep. Michael, how are you? Good to see you. Michael's also done a great job. He's been on there for, since the first time I was on the council, and probably before that.
Julia Foxwell is the one that got me into this.
Julia Foxwell appointed you?
She was on council.
Yeah, that's been a while.
They initiated first buggy road, didn't they?
Right past his country house store, I think it was, wasn't it? Thank you, Michael. Any other discussion on Resolution 85, 2018? All those in favor, Resolution 85, 2018, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes. Thank you, Michael.
Next is Resolution Number 86, 2018, confirming the reappointment of Bakulesh Patel to the Waukesha County Tourism Board.
Entertain a motion to approve Resolution 86, 2018.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 87, 2018, confirming the reappointment of Stephanie Willey to the Waukesha County Tourism Board.
Hang on, second last place. Entertain a motion to approve Resolution 87, 2018.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 88, 2018, confirming the reappointment of Kathleen G. McLean to the Waukesha County Tourism Board.
Entertain a motion to approve Resolution 88, 2018.
So moved.
Second?
Second, thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, Resolution 88, 2018, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Okay, next on the agenda is the submission of reappointments to the Waukesha County Recreation and Parks Commission. Again, in accordance with Charter, Section 315, Mr. Strasberg has submitted the names of several individuals to reappointment to the Recreation and Parks Commission. Each name will be considered in a separate resolution, as shown on the agenda's items number nine through 16. The Recreation and Parks Commission also serves in advisory capacity to the Director of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism. This commission, in addition to other duties, makes recommendations on all matters concerning the comprehensive planning, policy interpretation, budgeting, operations, maintenance, capital improvements, as well as the formulation of plans and policy for public recreation, and the establishment of recreation programs, and the creation of recreation policies. Starting with Resolution Number 89, 2018, confirming the reappointment of Alan C. Brown to the Waukesha County Recreation and Parks Commission.
Entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 89, 2018.
So moved.
Second? Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 90, 2018, confirming the reappointment of John W. Graut to the Waukesha County Recreation and Parks Commission.
Entertain a motion to approve Resolution 90, 2018.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 91, 2018, confirming the reappointment of George D. Burbage to the Waukesha County Recreation and Parks Commission.
Entertain a motion to approve Resolution 91, 2018.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 92, 2018, confirming the reappointment of Thomas G. Bowden to the Waukesha County Recreation and Parks Commission.
Entertain a motion to approve Resolution 92, 2018.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 93, 2018, confirming the reappointment of Samuel J. Disharoon VI to the Waukesha County Recreation and Parks Commission.
So moved.
Entertain a motion to approve Resolution 93, 2018.
Jump again.
We got a motion, second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, he goes by Jay, if people don't know.
Jake Disharoon.
Jake Disharoon.
Yeah. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, Resolution 93, 2018, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 94, 2018, confirming the reappointment of Sean V. Johnson to the Waukesha County Recreation and Parks Commission.
Entertain a motion to approve Resolution 94, 2018.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 95, 2018, confirming the reappointment of James I. Reed to the Waukesha County Recreation and Parks Commission.
Entertain a motion to approve Resolution 95, 2018.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 96, 2018, confirming the reappointment of Leslie I. Wright to the Waukesha County Recreation and Parks Commission.
Entertain a motion to approve Resolution 96, 2018.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes. I'd like to say, we just went through an awful lot of names very quickly, and a lot of resolutions, and I'd like to thank all the people that threw their name in to be appointed or reappointed. We all know they're very familiar faces in Waukesha County. They are leaders in the community, and they have contributed many years to the benefit of Waukesha County. And as a group, we appreciate each and every one of them taking on these positions in our county to help make it a better county for all of us, and to make our job a lot easier up here. Okay, thank you.
The next two items on the agenda, items number 17 and 18, are related. Item number 17 is the submission of an appointment to the Waukesha County Ethics Commission. Again, in accordance with Section 315 of the Charter, the Director of Administration has submitted the name of David Ennis to the Ethics Commission. The Ethics Commission provides published advisory opinions and makes determination regarding complaints filed by any person alleging violations of the ethics law. The Ethics Commission is also responsible for all forms required under the county's ethics law, and are responsible for developing procedures and policy for advisory opinions and requests, processing of complaints, as well as to conduct a public information program regarding the purpose and application of the ethics law. The next item is Resolution Number 97, 2018, confirming the appointment of David Ennis to the Waukesha County Ethics Commission.
Entertain a motion for, entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 97, 2018.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Chair abstains, just for the record, Mrs. Sandy. Thank you. Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 97, 2018, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Mr. President, that is all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurley. At this time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, please state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. That concludes public comments, council comments. Council comments. At this time, then, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn from the Waukesha County Council, so that we can convene as the Urban Services Commission.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are now convened as the Urban Services Commission, entertain a motion to approve the minutes from July 9th, 2018, minutes in reference to Kelvington and Hernan Bailey subdivisions.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes from July 3rd, 2018, in reference to Village Downriver Condominium Association.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion from the Urban Services Commission to adjourn, so that we may reconvene as Waukesha County Council.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned as the Urban Services Commission, and reconvene as the Waukesha County Council. First item on the open work session is the procedure regarding the release of liens in accordance with tax property, Article, Section 14806. Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, good morning. Just real briefly, a little bit of background on this. It's been a kind of a continuing problem in this county and elsewhere in Maryland, that, I call them derelict, abandoned properties unfit for habitation or other use, tend to just get churned around in tax sales, nobody wants them. And as we saw last year, we had at least one municipality that was interested in taking some property in that municipality to rehab it, and wanted a waiver of the county taxes. Under current law, that can't be done. Maryland tax law is quite state-dominated, and the local jurisdictions can only do what the state lets them do. Long story short, the General Assembly appointed a commission a couple of years ago, they came up with various recommendations in Senate Bill 951. Most of them have to do with tax sale procedures, but one in particular does not. It does have to do with taxes, and it allows the kind of waiver that I just mentioned, where somebody could be a municipality, it could be a nonprofit organization, could even be a private person, wants to take that type of property, let's call it derelict property, and rejuvenate it. And it sets up a procedure whereby the county, and for that matter, a municipality, where say, they would do it separately from the county, can waive those taxes. That particular part of Senate Bill 951 involves various somewhat complex criteria that have to be met to do that. I won't reiterate them unless you want me to, but the purpose of the resolution is to set up a procedure for making sure that those various criteria are satisfied by the county attorney, who would take a look at it and make a recommendation to the council, and also that it would be run by the county executive. Now, this would be on a case-by-case basis, anytime somebody comes in and applies for a parcel or parcels where they want to do this. So that's the purpose of the resolution, is to essentially have a formal process in place for doing this. This would start, 951 becomes effective October the 1st, so it could be as soon as then, or very shortly thereafter, that we begin getting applications.
Any questions from council?
Yeah, I mean, I know that Mardella Springs had a desire to do this with a couple of properties, and I think there's another town on the other side of the county.
Willards.
Yeah, Willards wanted to do that, so, I mean, like you said, it'd have to meet certain criteria, be vacant, unfit for habitation, I mean, it wouldn't just be any property that's on the tax sale list, or anything like that.
Well, I mean, theoretically, it could be, but I mean, they probably couldn't, most of them couldn't meet these criteria.
Yeah.
And even if they do, 951 is not mandatory. It doesn't direct the council, doesn't have to do it. So if they feel that there's something fishy or squishy about a particular application, you can always say no.
Yeah. I think it'd be good to go down the road of exploring this, and see what, you know, the administration has to think about it, and things like that, too, but it would be good to have this ability to do that, in the cases where they arise, so.
And we're assuming it's the desire of the executive branch to move this forward, right? Okay.
Has there been a list put together of how many of these properties we have in this situation?
You know, there's a lot of tax sales that have gone year after year, and I'll tell you that, if they don't exit for five, six years, this is the case for Willards, it's vacant, it's just dilapidated, they wouldn't go ahead and tear it down, they've got money to tear it down and rehab it, possibly sell it off, to where they could go ahead and put it, let's just say, put it back on the tax board, because we don't foresee it ever being paid for taxes.
And there might be 901(c)(3) habitat for humanity, there could be other groups besides municipalities.
Pretty much consensus, we're okay with this, right? But also, Mr. Taylor?
That's, see, that's not the next thing, I think. The next thing is tourism, isn't it?
Not on the work session, I mean, as far as regard to this.
Well, I think the next thing would just be to put it together as a resolution, bring it in.
Moving forward.
If it can be passed by October the 1st, I think that might be good. It not, wouldn't be the end of the world if it's not, but it seems to make sense.
We'll open, we'll keep the agenda open, for it to come in, and I think that's the most we need for a work session. Great, thank you very much. Next item on the work session is the, second work session is the, hang on a second, let me find it here, real quick. Working on a tourism advisory board, Mr. Strasberg? Pros and cons to the old digital era, you know? Well, I have to decide where I go, either go back up to page two on the agenda, or I find it in the briefbook area.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Wayne Strasberg, Director of Administration.
Steve Miller, Director of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism.
Mike Delano, Chairman of the Tourism Board.
We're bringing this forward to you this morning, this is a discussion that really came up to Steve, and it really came from the chairs of the two boards. Simply put, we've been having difficulty for quite some time in quarrels at the Civic Center Commission meetings. We've had difficulty with that, difficulty with attracting people who would be helpful on that commission. The people who have been attending the meetings are people who are also on the Tourism Board. And tourism and the Civic Center are so interrelated, that we felt that it would probably be of service to those people who are expending a lot of time on a volunteer basis, to combine those two boards into one board, so that people only have one meeting to attend, and we could get perhaps better cross-fertilization, if you will, in terms of ideas about how we promote both the Civic Center and tourism in the county. Mr. Urban could not attend today, he's the Chair of the Civic Center Commission, he was fully supportive of us merging these two boards, and Mike Delano, as you know, chairs the Tourism Board, and he's supportive of it as well. So it does require council action, if you are so inclined, and we're here today to answer any questions that you may have.
Didn't we have a restructuring of the Civic Center Commission here, just a few short years ago?
Yeah, it was, it was several years ago, it actually used to be combined with Recreation and Parks, and then at that time, the Civic Center was going down the path of renovation and all the rest, and the meetings were basically dedicated to Civic Center, and Rec and Parks was not getting its due, so it broke off. I think that was in the early 2000s.
Right.
So at one time, it was combined, and then it broke off.
Yeah, and at one time, Civic Center was on its own, and then it went, in the 90s.
Right.
Correct.
So, if you're planning to combine both of them, will Mike Delano still be the chairman of the, if he's willing?
Unless I talk Ed into taking it.
We can make them co-chairs. But look, these are really good people, they spend a lot of time, some great ideas, and we think it works very well, and, you know, from my standpoint, I think that this is a good move, and it will facilitate, I think, better attendance and better discussion and outcomes.
And honestly, the Civic Center is pretty much tied together with tourism, and a lot of what the Civic Center does revolves all around getting people here and creating venues. It makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, both tourism and Civic Center have received part of the hotel room tax, so there's a vested interest in having those two groups discuss, because they are recipients of that tax.
How many people serve on each committee?
There's a max of 11. Now, with this, we would have nine that would move over to tourism, and we'd love to fill those other two.
So how many are you gonna have on this committee to begin with?
It would, it'd be 11, would be our goal.
Would be the max.
Yeah.
After you combine both of them?
Yes.
When we combine both of them.
Yeah, and the ones that we're moving over, we're already on tourism, so we're waiting on a couple of other folks, but yeah. Okay, well, we can put you on the schedule in September.
Yeah, I assume we can do this by resolution?
No, this would have to be done by legislative bill.
Is it legislative bill?
Because the commissions are established in the county code.
Okay, that's right, okay.
So, I need to back that one up, or, well, I guess, you know, the legislative paperwork, the bill can get here soon enough, right? You can have it back with this table soon enough, right?
That's actually a county attorney question. How soon do you think you can draft that legislation?
Gotta have it ready for the next meeting.
September 4th?
Great, okay, because then we have the public hearing on whatever else.
And can I ask a question, too, about, in terms of the bylaws, those would need to be amended, is that something on our end that we would do, or is that?
You mean the bylaws for the committee?
We have, yeah, bylaws for each commission, so I presume we'd combine those two bylaws.
I think you would defer to Mr. Wilbur on that.
Okay, all right, I will do that.
So is there gonna be anyone displaced, that's not gonna be happy about being displaced? I suppose we'll hear from them, if they are.
I don't believe so.
Yeah, their terms have expired. A couple of the people, Joe, have mentioned that either for business reasons or personal reasons, they really can't continue. We have a member who we will ask to move over, who attends regularly, and I think she will accept. And we have a new member, a proposed new member, who we're going to approach, who will add a different facet, if you will, to the board. So I don't think you're gonna hear any negativity from anybody.
Mr. Wilbur, you heard Mr. Miller's suggestion, or the fact that he pointed out that the bylaws would need to be adjusted, too, so, I mean, if there's trouble with your timeframe, just let us know, okay? Because that does add a little bit more work, I think, to what you have to do.
I'll let you know.
Okay, thanks. All right, appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thanks. Appreciate it, Tom, thank you.
Take care, Mona. Next item on the agenda is the Department of Finance requesting establishing a comprehensive Waukesha County general fund balance policy. Sounds like a good idea.
We, basically for the public's benefit, an effective fund balance policy ensures adequate reserves for emergencies and ongoing capital needs, but it also ensures that the reserves are not accumulated in excess of an amount that can be reasonably justified, and which would result in excessive taxation. We believe that our current policy is outdated and in need of revision. That opinion has been expressed by credit rating agencies, and also our bond advisors, Davenport and Associates. After reviewing GFOA best practices and fund balance policies and other highly rated jurisdictions, we drafted the proposed policy that's before you. It has been reviewed by Davenport and Associates, and they feel that it's a very good policy. We recognize, however, that this is a complex matter, and that it warrants careful review and deliberation. We're here today to start that process and those discussions.
Okay, so opens up the floor, council comments.
Well, could you kind of explain the, you know, the 12% to 17%, you know, and then the rate stabilization? I mean, could you just kind of walk us through, you know, the specifics?
I'll let Don walk you through those.
Can I start with the rate stabilization? That is actually determined by the Healthcare Consortium. Last year, it was 12, it was 14%. This year, they're dropping it to 12. It is based on our payments from the prior year. So if we hit a time when our healthcare expense is going to be more than what we budgeted, So if we hit a time when our healthcare expense is going to be more than what we budgeted, we have something to fall back on to help with that. As far as the 12 to 17 percent, I've looked at other jurisdictions. Some are going from 10 to 15 percent, some are 12 to 17. The 17 percent seem to fit our circumstances, more than the 15 percent. We average about 10 million a month in recurring operating. And the 17 percent keeps us within that. It's only high end of it.
So this would, you know, we have these, the unassigned fund balance now and the rainy day fund.
Correct.
And so this would kind, this would create another fund, the stabilization, or is that a?
No.
There's already rates.
We already have a rate stabilization. We have the reserve fund, which is kind of called the rainy day fund. Normally, when you have an unassigned fund balance policy, you don't also have a reserve. That's why I've requested that we change that to a disaster recovery. We have roads wash out. We have during times where our fund balance can't handle that, we have funds put aside for it. Also, it would be in terms of human, you know, if there was something that happened. Or a matter that the council felt they needed, that we need to go into those funds. Still would stay at the same 5 percent as it has been since, I think, in the 90s.
Now, during the last recession, what, what happened with the, you know, with the previous, you know, unreserved, I mean, was that drawn down a lot during the last recession when property tax and, or was mainly income tax revenue really went down substantially? What was kind of the county history in terms of being able to dip into this?
I can pull the history for you so you can actually see it on paper. It did drop down, but with conservative, they cut capital spending, they cut operating. I remember that in like January of that year, no more capital was able to be done in order for us to maintain a fund balance. So through very conservative management or pretty much aggressive management at that point, they were able to maintain a fund balance that would keep us through that time. And since then, we've been building it back up.
The rainy day fund was not utilized, Mark. And, and the majority of the response to the recession was, was austerity in terms of spending. I'd like to make the point that, you know, each, each year we go to visit with the credit rating agencies and the rating agencies recognize that we have a revenue cap that places a limitation on our property taxes. They also recognize that we are at the maximum marginal rate for local income taxes. So from, from the credit rating agency standpoint, you know, those are two limitations that they're not necessarily thrilled about. That's counterbalanced by the fact that we have the strongest fund balance in the state as a percentage of recurring revenue. They have expressed the opinion that the current fund balance policy doesn't adequately protect that fund balance. And that it would be, it would be helpful to the creditworthiness of the county to have a, a, a bit more robust fund balance policy. Davenport and the Associates agreed with that. So again, this is our proxy and we wanted to, to open those discussions and see what council's, you know, appetites. It, it's a complex matter. It warrants a lot of discussion, a lot of consideration.
You say they want us to have a more robust, robust policy. Are they suggesting less of a fund balance?
No. They like our fund balance. They don't want to see it, they don't want to see it burnt through. Particularly, we're, we're 10 years into recovery. If you look back at our economic history in the United States, typically go through a recession at least every 10 years. So, you know, the confluence of, we, we are limited on property taxes, limited on income taxes, that's the majority of our revenue. The credit markets like to see your, your, your reserve balances strong so that you have that to fall back, to fall back on. The most likely thing that could happen to us that would trigger significant utilization of either the rainy day fund or the unreserved fund would be a category two hurricane. And we've dodged the bullet on that several times in the past couple of years. So, again, you want to, you want to strike a balance between running up a reserve balance that is the result of what I would call overtaxation versus a fund balance that doesn't prepare you to weather, if you will, that, that type of storm, that type of downturn. In recurring revenue or on the other side, costs.
You know, I know that particularly the board, I think the Board of Education, you know, and some of the folks involved there have concerns about our fund balance and how much we have. But when Mark mentioned history, you know, when we were going through that recession, due, due to the fact that we had a good fund balance, we were still able to move forward with a lot of the projects that we had to borrow money on because of that fund balance. So I feel it's very important, you know, that we keep that fund balance.
It's also important to point out, you know, we say this quite often, that, that, that your fund balance should not be utilized for recurring operating expenses. Your fund balance should be used for one-time capital or one-time catastrophic costs, if you will. It's, it's, you don't want to say, I want to fund a department an additional $2 million and that $2 million is going to occur every year in perpetuity. That's not an appropriate use of fund balance.
Mrs. Hurley, did you have any comments or comments to this?
I just want to clarify that that rate stabilization reserve, that is to be spent only on healthcare. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's a hedge against, that's a hedge against premium increases.
And then due to, due to the fact that healthcare is, is a moving target up, should that be increased?
We, the consortium just, just adopted that policy, so we review that on an annual basis, Joe, based on experience. So it either moves up or it moves down.
So when they, when they reviewed it, what did they come up with?
12 percent for this upcoming year.
So that's more.
Less, 2 percent less.
It was 14 percent.
Well, so why did they say bring it down when we have such a, you know, irrational, we don't know what's going on with healthcare. And we hear, you know, we've heard from your office that, you know, basically healthcare is not going to be sustainable, you know, in the future.
The other two, yeah, the other two entities in this past year had a better experience than the county did in terms of claims versus premium. So it's a, it's a majority rule. I would have been happy to leave it at 14 percent, but on one vote.
Any questions, Mr. Taylor?
Say, yeah, do I?
Any questions?
Well, just to, I just have a couple thoughts on it and I've already put some in writing, but as Mr. Strasberg just said, it's not a good idea to spend your unassigned funds to your operating budget. We are actually doing that. Now, we may at the end of the year have a surplus equal to or greater than the amount that we're putting in each year. The last few years have probably been good because tax receipts generally have been going up. That may not always be the case and it kind of violates the principle that, that he said. If the unassigned funds were capped or this level, the 17 percent level would be equal to about $22 million. And if we continued to roll over about 10 million each year into the budget operating, not knowing for sure whether at the end of the year we're going to get it back or not, at least during that particular year, the available remaining unassigned funds would be about $12 million. So I think, I think there's a lot, that's one thing to consider. Another thing to consider, I think most counties and municipalities that put a cap on of any kind like this look at about three to five years long run what their expenses are going to be. Because if they have to start drawing down their unassigned funds and they can't continue to do this rollover, there's only two ways you can balance the budget. You can either cut stuff out of it, like was done during the recession that we've just been talking about, or increase taxes. So, so this all factors into a lot of things. It's, it's, it's a bigger ball of wax, I think, than just looking and saying, well, this number sounds good, let's use this number. And I think that's what, if I were doing it, I would do. I would look at about five years out at least. And I think some of the things that you need to think about, just the things we've discussed at, at meetings that have come up, pre-K, what's going to happen there? What's the decision going to be? What's it going to cost? How's it going to be paid for? The new MS4 NPDES stormwater regs. Mako just wrote a letter to the state that the 10 large counties that have been under this for five years on the western shore are now about halfway through that new requirement that's now, that now we're subject to for restoration of stormwater systems. It's cost them 1.3 billion. If you just extrapolate, you think when they get to the end, that's going to be about 2.5 billion. That's billion dollars. If we just did 1 percent of that, I think it would be 25 million for us, just 1 percent of what those 10 larger counties are doing. Obviously, we're going to do less, so I'm just using 1 percent. Cut that in half, that would be 12 and a half million dollars. That would essentially wipe out the surplus that we've got now. So I think when you, when you kind of look at this on a big picture basis, there's a lot, a lot more to think about than just Davenport says it's great. Because Davenport, I don't think, sits here at these council meetings and looks at everything that, that is on your table.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
And I have found that there are a lot of other counties that do do considerably more than 17 percent.
Which I think is why we're here today, is to kind of like figure out where that is. I mean, if, if our, in all honesty, honesty, if the reserves were eight times what they are right now, we would definitely need a policy. I think everybody would agree to that. So where do you want to draw that line and, you know, what would that percentage be?
Yeah, just to clarify, our budgeted use of prior year revenue, which is fund balance, is in the operating budget, but it's always for one-time capital. So it's not for recurring expenses. So that's a point that needs to be clarified. I would also clarify that Davenport probably knows as much about our financial condition as our finance director does and we do a five-year forecast. So we pride ourselves in being very diligent in terms of how we analyze and when we put something forward to this council, it's, it's well thought out.
Understood. On item 1C in that proposed draft resolution,
Yeah.
how would you see that playing out? If you could just let me, just, you know, give me an idea.
I'll have Dawn talk to you about that.
Because you're referencing, you're referencing retaining it unassigned and then you say consider supplementing the pay-as-you-go and the third option you have is to prepay county debt. Let's say we were in that scenario where we had a 17 limit, we were at 19. How would that play out through the year? Because the CIP's done it one, the initial CIP's done it one time and it goes through a three-step process. I'd just be curious, once you found ourselves in that position, how would you address these three scenarios?
The three scenarios?
Yeah.
We already do this. This is putting into what practice we already have in place.
Okay.
We already, our use of prior year fund balance in the budget is already, like Wayne's already said, is for one-time purchases, departmental capital and pay-go.
Okay.
The other option in here is also to have it pay, prepay county debt. So if we do find we have, you know, above 17 percent, we're not looking at going into another recession, times are good and we want to pay down debt, we can.
Okay.
So this is actually just putting in writing the practice that we're already following.
Okay, so creating a hard and fast rule really isn't going to create any additional?
No, it's the practice we follow.
Good.
It would depend on the environment that you found yourself in. So it would depend on the interest rate environment that you were in at the given time. It would depend upon what your debt capacity was at that point in time and it would depend on what unavoidable capital needs you had. So we, we look at, we look through that prism, if you will, each time we go into this CIP cycle. When we're looking at CIP, we're already thinking about what do we believe is going to be affordable in terms of borrowing and pay-go.
In the years to come.
In that next budget cycle.
Yeah, right.
So, so that's the process. And the one after. So, you know, that's the process that you go through. So, but again.
I don't know if this is going to create any greater sense of urgency and, but I, I, I see where you're pretty much happy with.
Yeah, I think it codifies practice, but I also think that it, it, it serves the county well to have this discussion. If we want to have further discussion, you know, look at modeling of how this would work under different scenarios, you know, I think that's a very good idea. But I, I, I would just conclude by saying that our current policy is, is not appropriate for today's environment. It really needs to be looked at.
Well, so, you know, when we, we've been in a position for, tell me, how many of the past years were we've actually added to the fund balance? How many years has that been?
Five.
We're going in seven?
At least five straight years.
So, I mean.
We'll, we'll add to fund balance.
And it's, it's great to build up, you know, I mean, I like having a large reserve for these situations, but, you know, after so many years go by, we get to the point where, which you hinted at, if not said explicitly, you know, maybe we're overtaxing because we're collecting more money than we're spending every year.
Correct.
So, you know, I mean, maybe this should also have a discussion of that after, you know, after, you know, six or seven years of adding to the fund balance, then maybe we recognize that, all right, maybe we should lower taxes and maybe that should be the policy and then, you know, if there's a recession, then we do have the ability to raise that rate. I mean, right now, we're at the max essentially for property tax and income tax. So it's good to have a balance built up because we can't really raise taxes in the recession. But if we're continuing year after year to collect excess revenue, I think tax cuts should really start being looked at. You know, maybe not the first and second year because that could just, you know, be a blip, but this seems to be more of a trend that won't last forever, but.
Yeah, no, I mean, I mean, exactly. You, 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 you open yourself up to a, a legitimate complaint. But you're collecting, you know, more in taxes than you're spending for public, public needs. In the environment that we've been through during the time I've been here, again, we were at, at the depth of the recession when I came in, so we were extremely gun-shy about spending. So we've been very, very conservative by and large with spending. Where, where we've really experienced the lift, if you will, in revenue has been in income taxes because our employment trajectory really accelerated and, and we were very conservative with what we thought our income tax revenue would be. At some point in time, particularly when you go into a recessionary cycle, you know, there's going to be pressure on those local income tax revenue. So if, if, if we were to say, look, we believe that we're accumulating too much of a reserve and we really need to peel back on, on revenue, you have to go through the calculus of, okay, is, is it better for the citizenry and the county to lower the marginal local income tax rate or is it better to local, the property tax rate? And that takes quite a bit of analysis because it's, that, that's a moving target. Different taxpayers are going to be sensitive to different tactics in that regard. So I don't think we're there yet, but you always, always have to be mindful that by and large, we should be budgeting as best we can, not to produce excess reserve, but to take in as much as we're going to spend and that the spending is reasonable spending.
And you mean spend as much as you can take in?
To, to. To take, to, to add to what Mark said, because that is a really, really good point.
Yeah.
And I, I wouldn't be, I would think that maybe on this section C that we were talking about, that that would be the fourth option that would be necessary to put it in here, to include it. Do you not think so?
I think that that would be part of a revenue policy. Which my overall goal is to do a full financial policy. It's just, it is a lot to bring at one time, so doing a section at a time is my plan. The dropping of taxes, tax rates would be, would fall under the revenue, a revenue policy.
Separate from this policy, but.
Then they would all come together into one.
But this isn't an obligation on the part of this, this resolution doesn't create that obligation. All it does is say that it's, it's pretty much just establishing what it considers our options to be. And there, and I think there's more than three options. Spend the revenue as is suggested in these three options.
Sure.
Or, as Mark says, realize that maybe you need to reduce the revenue stream. And if you don't think so, that's. And if you don't think so, that's fine. This is, this isn't, we're not voting today.
Yeah, understood.
Yeah. Oh, hang on, Larry wanted to.
Go ahead, Larry. Yeah, I agree with what Councilman Kellmer was saying. Just because something's requested in the budget doesn't mean it's really a necessity. So at some point, the taxpayers may warrant a break, a cut. But I've got a question on the policy that you redefined rainy day fund. The rainy day reserve would be known as a disaster recovery reserve, which will remain committed, committed is the term, and may not be utilized without the approval of the county council for natural disasters, man-made disasters such as terrorism, or a condition considered at the sole discretion of the county, of the county council. What is the condition? That's kind of open and.
That was part of the original, so I left it in there. It was part of the orig-.
Over that.
The original policy, so I, I left it.
That, that last part just seemed so vague. It could be used for anything.
It gives you some flexibility. I would respond to that as saying that that may be employed in the event of, of a recession. I mean, a depression, a true depression, where you could not really manage your expenses and your revenue quickly enough to avoid significant harm to the general public. It, it's, it's a little soft.
Right, and, and I understand that, and there's a time that we may need that additional funding. But to throw that in there with a disaster, it's just, it's just too vague for that last part of it.
We can wordsmith it. I mean, again, we're open to all that.
And that's all I'm asking.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's fine.
Joe.
Well, we've heard that word a dozen times, recession up here. And I think what we need to be conscious of is, when the last recession happened, politicians a lot of time are in denial that it is going to happen. Because when that happened, there was lots of warnings prior to it happening, and they weren't heated in this, in the county government. So that's something that we need to take into account when we do this.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And with that said, when the recession hit, it really hurt the taxpayers, that there were city, county, state employees that had to do furloughs. And many of them never got reimbursed for that, that expected income.
So are we going to see another work session on this? I mean, what do you see as the timeline in what you are looking to do? Whether it comes back as a resolution, whether you're under the work session?
You know, my thought is, John, is that we could come back to you with some modeling and show you how this would behave under certain, certain assumptions. We, we are in the midst, we're about a week away from a five-year forecast that we'll take to New York with us. So we could take those five-year assumptions, that five-year forecast, and look at fund balance and how fund balance would behave if we were utilizing this policy. And that may be helpful for, for a discussion. And, and it'll probably open up more questions and more thoughts.
Okay.
So maybe we could do that. My suggestion would be that, do you think we can get that done for the next, for the next council meeting? September 4th? Do you want to do the second? Let's do the second to be safe.
Okay, that's, that's fine. I think, you know, Mr. Taylor did make a good point, that you do have, you do have the pre-K issue that I think is going to be with us.
And we took that into consideration.
And the MS four is going to be with us. I'm sure you are taking that consideration in your five-year planning.
No, we looked at that. I asked, I asked Bruce Ford to give me the five-year full-time equivalent enrollment figures. We cast that forward, tried to estimate what the five-year moving average is, cost per pupil at the state level, down to the local level. We factored in some inflation assumptions, some interest rate assumptions.
Okay.
And, you know, we're modeling that to see, okay, and they're pretty conservative assumptions. Conservative, Joe, from the standpoint of we, we are anticipating inflation, we're anticipating higher interest rates, we're anticipating increased enrollment. So we, we're doing a very conservative budget, five-year forward look, to see how skinny it gets, and, and it's prudent to do that.
Yeah, I think part of that, too, is to see what happens when the Curbing Commission comes out and what the state of Maryland decides to do once that comes out.
Yeah, and it's a wild card. We have no idea where this is.
I understand, yes.
But I think those things we can reasonably anticipate, we need to factor in. If, if, if you were at the, there was a revenue projection, presentation that was done. Andy Shoffel from DLS, who replaced, Juan Dechino was there. And it, it, I, I believe the counties that are anticipating that the recovery is going to continue on its current trajectory for the next five years are probably going to be surprised. And we would much rather be wrong on the conservative side than wrong on the aggressive side. So I, we prefer conservative assumptions in terms of revenue and what could happen with the expense environment versus, well, we've been experiencing 6% revenue growth, and that's going to continue for the next five years. I don't believe it will. So we're modeling that. I think we come back to you with that and show you. I, I think that'll be good with regard to going into this CIP cycle, the next budget cycle. In any event, but it'd also, I think, give you a, a, a broader perspective on how we should be looking at this fund balance policy.
Okay, but we're not under any time constraints.
No, we're not.
Mr. Ken.
We'll work, we'll work whatever your agenda allows.
I just want, one other suggestion. I think Mr. Strasberg's idea of modeling is, is really good. I would suggest, though, in that context, of modeling for maybe two major events. We did have the recession, and imagine what would have happened if we had had one of those two, category-two hurricanes that we dodged during that period. It's a little bit, kind of reminds you in the military, there's an expression, size your armed forces for two wars, not one. And that's just, just a thought, you know, you won't, take a hard look at that.
That's a good idea.
Joe.
The rate stabilization reserve, you said it's, that is established by the three.
The consortium, yep.
Is that, is those funds combined, those, the funds, they're not combined?
No.
Okay.
They're separate funds.
Okay. I, I don't mean with the other two entities now I'm talking about, okay. So why, if they set it at 12, why can't we have our own 14 if we want it? I mean, we, can't we reserve what we want? Why do we have to, just because we're, you know, we pay it all to get, I mean, we use, what's the difference?
I think we can through the budget process, and we decide to do that, you know, we can do that.
I think that would probably make the employees feel a little bit better, knowing that, you know, that reserve is there in case there is a problem. We have, seem to have a
Okay.
problem with morale at some times, you know, employees, so.
That's fair, that's fine.
Any other, any other questions, discussion? Mr. Rose, or anything?
Good discussion.
The auditors haven't had a chance to review it yet, but we are in the process, and we'll, we'll be happy to weigh in and help any way we can.
Great, thank you, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the amendment to fiscal year 19, 2023 capital improvement budget. The item in particular is a Purdue Stadium renovation project. Mr. Miller?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Again. Again. Why don't you let us know where, where you are and what you're, what you're looking at?
Sure, so we're in the final stage of the Purdue Stadium renovation project that was outlined in the 20-year lease agreement. In the CIP, we had put a number of $480,000, which was the final contribution from the state, which was originally outlined. It was half state, half county. And then the team also had a contribution that was all outlined in the lease. So the number we had put in the CIP was 480,000. As you know, the state funding got delayed for several years, so we got delayed. And the state actually gave us 580,000, so it was an extra 100 from what we had originally anticipated. So what we're requesting today is to amend the CIP from 480 to 580 so that we can utilize those state funds. Those funds come without a match, so essentially, it's, it's additional money from the state without any additional obligation from the county.
Questions, Mark?
Can we just reduce the county by 100,000, or adjust the numbers that way, keep it flat?
The county's already been committed and spent.
Well, we already spent?
Yeah. I, I knew you were going to ask that question.
I mean, I'm kind of predictable.
After almost four years.
Yeah.
Did any of this funding come from the stadium authority?
Not that I'm aware of. I don't believe directly.
Just wondering, the convention center and those facilities received that funding numerous times.
Yeah.
It'd be nice if we could get it sometime.
I agree.
Any other questions, concerns on council department? Ms. Hurley, what, what would we do from here?
The next step is a public hearing, and we can have that September the 4th at 6:00 PM.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. The next item on the agenda is the, Mr. Weston Young. I know he's been in and out. I'm not sure which direction he is. Surplus property is the item on the agenda. We have an hour and a half to discuss this.
There's a lot of property. You see the list?
Yes.
It's a good point. It's a really good point. Good idea.
Let us know who you are, Weston.
Weston Young, Assistant Director of Administration. I have a small PowerPoint to go along with what's in your brief book in terms of the properties I would like to be considered for surplus.
Yeah, I just want to say, this is something we, we talked about in other contexts. So I really appreciate you following up on this, and it looks like a very thorough review. So, so I appreciate moving this process forward, so.
And one moment as the TV gets turned on.
Mr. Young, you just had a compliment from Councilman Kellmer. A rare, a rare moment.
He, he, he doesn't know what to do, so he's just gonna, he's just gonna.
No, 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 sorry.
He's too, he's speechless.
I, I don't want technical difficulties for, for this. But, yeah, it was, it was something that has been on my plate for some time. And to fully go through every county-owned property, and, and as my presentation will display, hopefully. Okay.
I mean, there's a lot here, so.
And we have a few more that we would like considered. I have a presentation, and then I also have mapping available that we can scroll around if you have questions about the specific location. So, okay. As I mentioned, I, I went down a list of all the county-owned properties, parcels, and that actually took some time because the descriptions weren't always accurate, or, or maybe there was no description tied to it. I then tried to determine what is the current or planned use for said parcel. And, you know, if it's tied to airport, and usually our property around the airport is protected in case there's a potential crash. Some of the parcels were parks that I didn't know existed. But there was a certain time period where open space was required in a subdivision, and that became a park that we took over. I don't think we're doing that currently, but it, it was a, it was a process to go through each. Of the ones that did not seem to have any current or planned use, these are a large section of those. There's still a few more that we, we want to look through. But I wanted to get many of them to you now, and I'll be presenting them. I just want to note, and if you've skimmed through, some of the boundaries aren't correct. At least what's shown on the maps, those are GIS boundaries and, and need to be edited. The acreage varies depending on which document you're looking at. So there, there's things that, when we do the title research and, and all of that, we will narrow that down. So the first property in your brief book is 233 Naylor Mill Road. That's east of the sheriff's office and correction center. From our research, it seemed that this was purchased with the intention of expanding Northwood Drive at a later date some years ago, so we've, we don't have any plans for extending that road. It did have a house on it that, when I came on board, under General Services, it was being rented. It wasn't in great shape, so we've since demoed that, and the property is clean, ready, ready to go.
Now, is, does the county own property north of that? I mean, because if you're buying to extend the Northwood Drive there, that would make sense. But if it's just that parcel that.
Yeah, we, we don't own the property north of that. And we don't have any intentions. I, I think, just like when we presented the Connolly Mill property some time ago, that was bought by a group with the intention of the industrial park expanding. Things change, as always, with development and, and economy. So the Northwood Drive industrial park seems to be contained where it is at the moment.
Yeah, and I have seen plans, planning and zoning for Northwood Drive to go all the way up to, you know, essentially behind Coles and Chili's, and stuff like that up there. But that doesn't seem, that, that doesn't seem like the plan anymore, so.
Yes. Any questions on this parcel?
Okay.
Next parcel, and actually, the next four are in the same area. And this is trying to keep with your brief book. One of the last ones falls in this property. But the, the one you want to look at is the one in the yellow, not the blue. This is 601 Delaware Ave. It is under 8,000 square feet. That and the two parcels next to it, which I have on these slides, which are 504 and 506 Woodland. 504 and 506 Woodland are 9,000 square foot parcels approximately. They were all obtained in a tax sale back in early 2000s. I want to say it was 2001, 2000, somewhere between 2001, 2004, how the county acquired those. And they've been sitting vacant. So these are ones that we see no need for and could easily get put back on the market. And they seem to be three developable parcels. The fourth one, which is slightly in a different area, but is off Rose Street. And it's another residential lot that we took in a tax sale. And we do not see a need for.
Are there houses on there now?
No. The next parcel is one that I'm not really sure how the county acquired it. And it's also a good example of one where the GIS boundary is, is not to be believed. To the east, so on the right-hand side where you see a driveway, that is actually not part of the parcel. And in the documents of planning and zoning notes, you'll see that it's actually smaller. This is one that I, I, I don't see Tillman Road extended whatsoever. And this is, this is a parcel that we think we can part with as well. The next parcel, off Old Ocean City Road, it's actually, doesn't have access to Old Ocean City Road anymore and is on Beagle Park Drive. This was used as a stockpile and mobilization area when that section of Beagle Park Drive was, was being constructed. It's no longer needed. We may have access concerns about it connecting on the Beagle Park Drive. So in this case, it may be better for an adjacent property owner to, to purchase it. But this is another one that we, we do not have a need for.
Is there a potential getting a right-of-way?
Uh, I believe so. I believe so. I know there were access restrictions on the Collector Road. So we'll just have to look into that a bit further. And that goes back to a lot of these, you know, I've identified them. We've done some basic title and plat searches through planning and zoning. But, you know, we would, we would need the county attorney's office to do a, a more elaborate title search before we, before we put those up. But if the direction is to proceed, we'll start with each, and then they'll probably trickle in because they all have varying degrees of difficulty. because they all have varying degrees of difficulty or, uh, items to work through.
That's why we end up with...
Yeah, and it, and it's hard for us to get, get rid of them. The next one, instead of showing an aerial, I wanted to show a plat. At the top right, and I don't seem to have a pointer on here. At the top right, let me start over. This is where, um, we acquired the, uh, Suggs property, the Baron Creek Road, when it washed out. Um, what we bought was a series of parcels. So we, we bought a series of parcels, one of which, and what we came before you before, and the laser pointer doesn't work as well on the screen, was the, was the residential property. We've subdivided that and we, you know, have it listed, to my knowledge, it's been listed, uh, currently. So we're looking to part with that parcel. Another parcel in the acquisition was the Pond Bottom. That was about a sixteen-acre pond bottom. It's, it's, you know, wetlands was non-title wetlands, now it's more tithely influenced. And the other parcel, parcel three, was a little, um, I'll say a, a small, what the plat in front of you says, .6 acre, um, property that we do not have access from, from the road. So the thought is we would just surplus this and offer it, um, to be sold to the adjacent property owner. I think historically it used to belong to, um, that property. Um, we can also hold on to it. It, you know, it's, it's just one that I identified from the Baron Creek purchase that there's really no use for the county to have it and the adjacent owner may want it. The next property, um, is, is south of Hebron. It's off of Wood Avenue and Bell Avenue. And the history with this one is the Board of Ed bought it for some purpose. And it's another, um, example where the GIS boundary and what we started looking at through the plats, there seems to be a disconnect, uh, somewhere along the, the plats where a surveyor didn't pick up a, a certain parcel. So, um, this one's gonna require a little more title search to determine what is our actual boundary, but there's no need for this. This, this looks like it has development potential and we really should get it back, um, in the private sector.
And you have no idea why the Board bought it?
There's, there's some history. Um, I, I haven't done a lot of digging, um, in terms of, or spoken with the Board of Ed about, you know, why you bought it and there was some condition that if it wasn't used, it would revert back to the county. And that should be in the brief book, but...
How far is it from the nearest school?
Yeah. Um, I'm, I'm not certain.
How long ago did they buy it?
I can look that up. It should be in the, uh...
And, and we own that or the Board of Ed owns it?
We own that. Um, it reverted, it reverted to us.
So it's been a while, probably?
Anything the Board of Ed has, the surplus always goes back to the county, supposedly.
Looks like it was about 2002. 2001, 2002, that we, uh, we received the property.
Oh, that's when we received it?
Yeah. Yeah, so I, yeah.
It's not when the Board bought it.
They probably had it a while.
Yes. So again, what, what we would do is, um, this is a very high-level presentation and as we delve into each of these, if the consensus is, where council is okay with this, we'll, we'll do more research and we'll have the full title search with each of these as well. The, uh, next property is off of Capitola Road. And if you looked in your brief book where it's shown on this map and the maps I have access to, it is not where it, it is shown. It is actually shown further to the west. It's about an acre property and it's, it's wooded. Most of the property there is, is wooded wetlands. And, uh, we think just one of the adjacent property owners would be, uh, willing to, to buy this from us. The next, uh, which goes back to when I, when I had the several tax sale parcels off of, uh, Delaware and, uh, Woodland, this is a bit north of that. It's a larger parcel. I needed to update the acreage 'cause it's more than point, um, no, maybe it is accurate, .6 acres roughly. If I remember correctly, I believe Sewer is running, um, in front of it but not attached to it. So it, it, it should have development potential. Again, this was another tax sale property.
You don't have an address for it?
Uh, it did not have a 911 address. And then finally, um, at least with this group of surplus properties, is Red Hill Lane, uh, two and a half acre parcel off of Red Hill Lane. It was an old dredge site for a smaller dredge. Uh, there's no way this could handle the amount of dredge we need in one of our dredge cycles. Looking at the history, it seemed to be one of the local harbors. It may have been Bi-Valve Harbor or, or one of those was used. So I don't think it has development potential, but, um, at least one adjacent property owner has reached out about buying that. So this is, this is another one that from, uh, dredge planning, we do not have use for and, uh, we think it could go back on the tax rolls. So with that, those were, uh, it's about a dozen properties I had to present today. As long as there's no heartburn, um, on any of those, we can proceed with, with more research in terms of, um, bringing them to, to sale.
When you say, um, a joint owner might wanna buy it, is, is that the most efficient way or the most cost-efficient way for us to do it? Or might we still put it out there for, for bid?
I think we'd still put it out there. In the case of like that Baron Creek property, somebody could buy property that there's no physical access for unless they walk through. The Old Ocean City Road, uh, many of these I think we would list and, uh, put forward. I think the smaller they are, uh, auctioning may make more sense.
Get your best dollar?
Yeah, we'll, we'll be, we'll, we'll work with purchasing and try, we, we wanna get the best dollar for it and get it back on the tax rolls. So with that...
Again, this is, um, good work. I mean, I, I appreciate, um, looking into this. What, what's the process then? Is this, has the county done this before? I mean, I've never really heard about this sort of, you know, trying to get rid of properties.
Yeah, not to this level. Um, you know, just the process we followed with the, um, I'll say the Suggs House on the Baron Creek Road will, will come before you with a specific ask. And say, take the first one, uh, 233 Naylor Mill Road. Um, you know, we've, we've done the title search, we want to list it. And, and each case will, will come before you saying, um, auction. I, I wanna say the charter says auction is the default mode, but if we feel that we can get more money listing it, um, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna suggest that. And we'll probably have, um, purchasing agent Nick Rice there as well.
Is that Naylor Mill property commercial?
Uh, I believe so. I believe that whole area is, if it's not commercial, it's industrial. Yes.
Could I offer one thought on, on the disposition mode? A couple of months ago, Ms. Hurley and I looked at some other counties in relation to the Baron Creek property with the house on it. And we noticed that some of the counties apparently just sort of list them on their website, almost an invitation-to-bid basis, don't list them with the realtor, and I would assume then go to a negotiated sale. And that might be a thought for, for some of them, particularly for those smaller little pieces and of course you can put sign on them too. Just, just a thought rather than list, list, listing them with a broker or auctioning them.
Understood, understood. For sale by owner. Yeah, uh, if we, if we feel we can, um, you know, again, I think what, what we'll bring forward, and we can also put it on the website as well, even if we go with a, a third party to, to part with it. What we wanna do is get the best price for it and ultimately...
And of course they have to be advertised.
Yes.
For the surplus, so you, you, that could roll into a for sale by owner type ad.
Correct.
Almost, yeah.
Correct.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Weston.
Now, at this time, um, what we'll do is entertain a motion to adjourn so that we can go into, uh, from the open work session for an administrative closed session in accordance with Section 3-104 of the Local Government Article of the United Code of Maryland to Discuss Counsel Administrator Direction. That's a motion.
Shall we move?
Second?
Second.
Alright, the purpose for this is, I think what we'll do here for council, as it's 11:20 right now, uh, we would like to do the closed sessions and the adminis, and administrative closed session? And then, then we could go have lunch and come back at 1:00 for the Board of Education. Okay, so that, the motion's on the floor. All is in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried and now in closed session. Is everybody here?
I don't think so.
Oh. Well, um, well, that's good. We can still do that. Gotta entertain, entertain a motion to adjourn from closed session so we can go into open session. Second?
Second.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Nice neat bow. Alright, where the, pull up the agenda. Now reconvened as Wycomico County in Legislative Session 2018-19 for August 21st, 2018. Uh, the next item on the agenda is an open work session with our illustrious Wycomico County Board of Education. We actually should move the entire set of seats all the way up here, right?
Whole front row.
Yeah. We have two more chairs. Whoever'd like to join us. That's right. Oh, good, yeah. You gotta love the education people 'cause they, they always bring detailed notes and lists and you can't go off-agenda or, you know. Alright, well, it's good seeing y'all. Middle of summer, right? So, um, gearing up for, uh, for what's coming, right?
Definitely.
Wonderful.
This week is a big week.
My gosh, yeah, you have, um, open houses and, and, um, first AOs or back-to-school rallies everywhere. It's like ten of them.
Ladders yesterday, right?
Arrived yesterday.
Good, good, good. It's gonna be exciting here.
I believe summer's open.
Yes, it is.
So, um, Don, how are you?
I'm doing well.
Good. So you had some campaign signs out?
I do. I do, and I'm, versus the last time I have a speaking, uh, apparatus, I'm like, without using my finger, so.
Okay. Very good. Pen and Superintendent, I'll let you start.
Okay, well, um, we have five items on the agenda, uh, four of which came from you all and then we added, um, item E, which has to do with the questions, the dialogue we've been having about, uh, data from Warwick Community College. So, um, I'll just start off by, um, talking about goals for the year. First, let me thank you for, um, the additional funding that you gave us above maintenance of effort. The $500,000, um, is, um, part of what I'll talk about in terms of my goals. We are staying the course. I know you probably have copies of this, but just in case.
Okay.
This is a condensed version of, um, thank you. A condensed version of Achieve, or excuse me, Imagine 2022, which talks about the goals for the future. Before I do that, let me stop and just recognize our board members who we have here. You know President Fitzgerald, who is here with us. Um, we have Gene Malone, Vice President of the Board, and we have board members John Palmer and Michael Murray and Alan Brown are with us today.
Good to have y'all here. You could seriously bring those chairs all the way up here if you guys want.
We're alright.
And just for, uh, the public, if you could introduce yourselves to PAT 14.
Sure.
Wonderful.
Okay, I'm Donna Handlon, Superintendent of Schools.
Uh, Rick Briggs, Chief Academic Officer.
Bruce Ford, I'm Chief Finance and Operations Officer for...
And Don Fitzgerald, President of Wycomico County School Board.
Great, okay.
So.
Got that out.
Yes.
I get it all.
So in this condensed version, if you, I'm just gonna call your attention to the very small grid and I apologize that it's so small. If you're like me, you have a hard time reading this small font, but I guess the main message that I want to share with you is that we are staying the course. See, these are the strategic priorities that were shared last year. Numerous, uh, events and venues and as part of our strategic plan that led to our request for funding to the council. So we are continuing to focus on these three areas. An effort to increase the number of students who are reading on grade level by third grade. And in that area, you know that we are intent on implementing universal pre-kindergarten. And again, you, the funding that you provided to us last year is helping to begin that initiative. Um, and I'm gonna go a little bit into, um, letter B of the agenda, which talks about how the new funding is, is being used. We were able to increase, um, our classrooms for universal pre-K by five. We added five additional classrooms, two at Chipman Elementary, one at West Salisbury.
And how did you do that?
How did we do that?
Were they portables?
No. They're in phase one, you may or may not remember, phase one of universal pre-K was looking at where we have existing space available. So this is part of phase one. So, um, those are, that's existing space.
As we were talking about portables at one point.
At one point in the law, that was actually phase two of universal pre-K. So, um, two classrooms at Chipman, one classroom at West Salisbury, one at Prince Street, one at Pinehurst.
That's five.
That's five, thank you. Um, so those are the five classrooms, um, that will be open and ready to go. We've been, uh, talking as much as we can broadly about, uh, so parents will know that that opportunity exists where it may not have for them before based upon eligibility. So, um, we also are very appreciative, you may have seen where the Wycomico County Education Foundation presented us with a check at the last board meeting for $45,000 and $95, I believe. Forty-five, ninety-five for, uh, five tech packages, very specific package of technology that would be used in those teachers' classrooms. So, much appreciated for that, that funding. So, that's really, we're just gonna continue the course with looking at where we can add additional classrooms for the following year so, um, you can anticipate that as we move, as we move forward, just looking at more opportunities for students. In the second area...
If I could ask you, how many, how many students do you anticipate for each of the additions? Is that ten per classroom?
It's twenty, it's twenty.
That's a lot.
It is. It's, it's about seventy students actually and the reason for that is because some of the additional classroom is used to change a half-day program into a full-day program.
That's at Pinehurst. Pinehurst Elementary currently has one classroom that services the two half-day programs. And with this additional staff, we're now able to have two full-day programs there.
Oh, good, okay.
Okay. So in the second area of graduation rate, I'm not gonna go through all those strategies with you, but again, we're, we're inching up slowly, but we wanna continue to do that. And, um, you know that this year we're starting the STEM Academy, the Next Gen Academy at Salisbury Middle School, which is fully enrolled. And, um, we're looking at a number of other things. We're very excited, although it's small. Um, we are initiating in the fall of this year an early college program with Warwick Community College. When I say small, I'm talking about less than ten students. But these are students in the pathway of computer science who will be on Warwick's campus full-time in their junior and senior year. campus full-time in their junior and senior year. They will graduate with a high school diploma and an associate's degree at the same time.
Very good.
So we're starting that program, taking baby steps as a, as a, you know, foot in the door, but we're excited about where that could go, including the possibility in the future of a pathway for teacher education. Because with the teacher shortage that we have, we're looking at how we can continue to grow our own. A number of other initiatives where we're looking at specifically at non-traditional pathways, we're increasing opportunities for students to do online learning over at the Choices Academy, and some other workplace development initiatives. Mike Stoffer, who's our Director of Secondary Education, is taking the lead on that, and he has described to me a menu of options that students will have, again, in an effort to keep students in school.
How do they do the online learning? Is that in association with a third party, I'm guessing, most likely?
Just in some cases. We use a program called Edmentum.
Okay, but it's a, it's a program that the county has.
Yes, it's an existing program, Edmentum, where the students, 20% of their time is spent in the classroom, receiving instruction, and then 80% of the time is, you know, electronically, either in our lab or even from home as well.
And the third area is recruiting and retaining a high-performing workforce. We have a great group of teachers coming on board again. The last time I checked, we were down to two vacancies.
That's correct, and I believe it's down to one after this one.
Okay, that's good, because I will tell you that there are systems around us who are in a lot worse shape than we are. So we're, we're excited about the, the new group of teachers who are coming to work with us, and we know that our job is to support them and retain them through a number of initiatives. We did just complete our salary study. It was presented and accepted by the board at the last board meeting, which was simply just accepting it. Now, the board, along with staff, will take a look at those recommendations and determine what we will do with the salary study.
Who is the consultant?
The MAG group. Somebody wanna help me with what MAG stands for? We're all gonna draw a blank.
Yeah. Can't remember.
The MAG group, and maybe it'll come to me before I leave here.
MAG consulting.
Today. MAG consulting.
We can go, go in about.
Yes, you probably could. You could. But they did a very thorough job working with us, looking at a market analysis. We focused really primarily on what we call Unit 34, which are classified employees, our non-certificated staff. What we learned was not a surprise to us that where there are the biggest gaps in salary are at the beginning of the scale. We're getting closer to the market at the midpoint of this, of that scale, and then when we get to the top, we're, we're pretty close to the, so we're really looking at the beginning of the scale. Ultimately, the recommendation is $2.4 million to correct the underpaid employees at the bottom of the scale. So, you'll be hearing more about that after our board really takes a look at it and decides how to move forward.
Yeah, we just did, we just did a summer thing as well, the county, with its employees. Found out that we had some inconsistencies.
The other thing I'll tell you generally, just because actually it's the last item under all of these initiatives, has to do with the way that we're communicating important information. We continue to work in that area, and Mr. Butler has taken on the initiative of creating, working with an organization to create a new website that will be much more user-friendly, easier for parents to use, locating resources that they need, and that will be launched on August 31st.
I think that's a good idea. Yeah.
Yeah. We did too. So, that's just a big overview, but, but I guess the, the bottom line is we're staying the course. We're continuing with the, with the same initiatives. So, I think I've answered the first part of Letter B about how the funding for pre-K is being used. Were there any other questions about that? I know we haven't talked about the measures.
I guess the measure for success was partially what some, some constituents
Sure.
were wondering about.
Yeah. And Rick and I, do you wanna, do you wanna do that?
Tag, we can tag.
Go ahead.
You can fill in where I mess up or where I forget. But basically, as Dr. Handlon pointed out, the goal of increasing kindergarten readiness falls underneath of the strategic priority of making sure all students are reading on grade level by third grade. We've stated tons of research where it shows the importance of reading on grade level and how that correlates with, you know, positive graduation rates and so forth. So, one of the main things we're gonna do is focusing on, at the end of third grade, you know, where are our students at as far as, with their literacy skills? And we actually give a BASS assessment, which is a benchmark assessment system, which we give in kindergarten, first and second grade, which will enable us to really focus on the literacy skills that our students have. It identifies both their strengths and their weaknesses, which then informs the instructional practices in the classroom, so that the teachers can be addressing those deficiencies that the students have and then enriching the strengths that they have. Currently, we have about 55% of our students who are reading on grade level when we finish second grade. That's gonna be an area that we focus on and would love to see increased, especially through those expansion of the pre-K classrooms. So we're gonna be able to track that. We can then do some, we can desegregate the data and look at how our pre-K students are doing by the time they reach third grade and can track their reading levels, as opposed to those students who are not a part of our pre-K system or not a part of any pre-K. And so we'll be able to look forward to hopefully sharing some positive results with you in the future.
What was the percent you said?
Currently, 55.
55% or on reading level?
On or above. Great reading. Yep.
So, so by, you know, 2022, what do you expect, or what is the goal for that number to be?
Go ahead, throw it out there. Say 108.
Well, obviously, I mean, if I was being politically correct, it would be 100, but, you know, like No Child Left Behind.
Exactly. We all know how.
Yeah, I mean, I would feel really good by 2022 if that figure was approaching, you know, 65%. I think that's realistic at this point.
Yeah. Now, so with, with what, the pre-K that's going, you know, the five new classrooms, are you considering this universal pre-K, or is this qua, I mean, it's, I mean, more, it's moving towards universal?
It's moving towards universal pre-K. The definition of universal pre-K is that all students in the county have access to a Wycomico County school's full-day program.
Yeah.
So.
And that's not, that's not quite the level there yet?
It's not there yet. We were at 56% last year, so we're, we're, you know, we won't ever probably serve 100% because there will be families who will choose to stay in private kindergarten programs.
President Fitzgerald, you need to use that mic when you speak, if you don't mind, please. I don't think, I don't think council.
He's just giving me a hard time. I heard him.
Well, in case you didn't, in case you didn't hear me, if we get more money, we can make it happen.
That's right. As the council, we remember, we asked for 11 this fiscal year.
11 classrooms.
Phase One, 11 classrooms. We received five. Thank you. And Phase Two would ask for additional 15 classrooms. Now, the, the State Education Association is working hard on that, as you all know. Where do they stand right now as far as funding for Wycomico County?
Only through grants. There's been no movement. Now, the Kerwin Commission has that as one of their pillars, one of their major recommendations, how that will, they're working on their funding strategies right now that will come out in December.
December.
December of this year. So we're anxiously awaiting to see what kind of recommendations they're gonna make to the state of Maryland in terms of funding, any kind of funding for, for pre-kindergarten. But at this point, we get no funding through the regular formula.
Not yet, but they are working on it for the counties.
They're not working on it yet. I think they're waiting for some kind of recommendation for Kerwin.
I know it's a discussion. I've been following their website.
Yeah. Now, on, on pre-K, I mean, I'm sure, you know, there's been a lot of new research coming out lately, I think like with Tennessee, for instance, you know, with their pre-K program and finding out that the way they implemented it there has actually led to kind of lower academic achievement in some respects because of the way they've, you know, done it. So, I mean, you know, what, what are, what are your goals for ensuring that, you know, you're using the latest methods, keeping up with latest research from other states to make sure that, you know, it's done correctly here?
So unless there's very recent, I know something's been recently published, but that's old research from Tennessee, and they did not take into consideration the kinds of things that we know are important to do, and I may have mentioned these last year. This is not about giving money towards pre-K, opening five classrooms and expecting those numbers to change. We know that we have to, the expectations for kindergarten teachers and first and second grade teachers needs to change based upon what's happening in classrooms in pre-K. And so we, it's, it's not just about what happens in a pre-K classroom, it's about what happens from that point forward, and making sure that those teachers have professional development or the resources that they need to make sure that they are moving on that trajectory. I don't, this is probably not an exact answer to your question, but one of the things that popped into my mind that I'll just mention while I have the mic is that, you know, for, in fact, the first year I was here and years previous to that, principals, one of their number-one requests was for intervention teachers. Intervention, to intervene with students who were not reading on grade level, because they had so many teachers who were, I mean, excuse me, so many students who were not reading on grade level that they wanted intervention teachers to work with those students. It would also be my goal that that number would not increase and may eventually decrease the number of intervention teachers that we need. That will be part of what we keep an eye on. Did I answer your question?
I mean, probably, yes, probably as well as a kid.
Okay. Okay. There's another study that I, I don't know if you've seen from the Brookings Institute?
No.
Okay. I will try to remember to send you that, that talks about what I've just been talking Anything else about measures?
What is the SMRI, SRI and SMI? What level, grade level is that?
SRI?
Yeah.
Yeah, so this called the, now they've kind of dropped the S, but the RI, the Reading Inventory, and then, so we do not offer the math inventory anymore. That was something that Scholastic had tried to push out, and it was not beneficial to our teachers, and we're not a fan of just assessing for assessment's sake. So, we don't utilize that anymore, but the Reading Inventory is an assessment that we use in third, second grade through 11th grade to track students. It's an online assessment where it tracks their reading progress and lets teachers know exactly what level Lexile score the students are reading on, so then they can then make informed instructional decisions with those students, and making sure that they're reading appropriate text and challenging them. So that we do it in second grade through 11th.
Well, I know most of us always run into teachers or staff members, and they always fill our ear with things that they're concerned with at the time, and that was something that was brought up, and they also mentioned the SMI, which I guess we don't do the math anymore.
Correct.
Is it true that they, when they go into the classroom to do this testing, they're only doing one student at a time?
So that would be not RI. So RI is every student is basically online, they register online, or get on a laptop or desktop computer and take the assessment, and takes about 30 to 35-minute window, and then they resume regular instruction from there, and that's just done twice a year. The one-on-one assessment is that BASS that I referenced earlier.
You did mention that.
And that is a one-on-one assessment where the teacher and student are sitting side by side and working through a series of text and identifying letters and sounds, and so they can really understand the strengths and the weaknesses that those students have. And, you know, ideally, in that situation where that one-on-one instruction or testing is happening, the other students are in small groups, and the instructional assistant or even additional support that are put into the classroom is in making sure that the other students are still receiving.
And I think that was one of the concerns, what the rest of the class was doing while that teacher was doing it one-on-one. So the other kids are actually occupied at that time?
Oh, yes. Most definitely.
That was a concern. I'm, I'm not in the classroom, I don't see it with my eyes, but I did hear that.
Yep.
But thank you for that explanation.
Which again, it kind of leads into the next one, the degree of testing. I mean, that, the, the assessments that we give, there are a handful of what we call summative assessments, that basically the state mandates, you know, the park at the end of the year and so forth, the PSAT at the end of 10th grade, during 10th grade. But the majority of the assessments that we give, such as BASS, such as RI, such as some of the, the benchmark assessments throughout the year, they're, they're formative assessments to inform the instruction that's going on. We, as I stated earlier, not a fan of assessment for assessment's sake.
Right.
It's, those assessments should be translating into meaningful classroom instruction, you know, enabling the teacher to know what, what groups of students are deficient in this area, and then so that they can specialize that instruction for those students. So again, it, it's a concerted effort to take that, those assessment scores and really dig into that and break it down to see how that can translate into better instruction in the classroom. Because if that's not happening, then the assessments are pretty much worthless, and that's not what we want happening. To go, to extend on that a little bit, the, a simple answer to the increasing or decreasing would be neither, that we're pretty much maintaining. Senate Bill 452, which came out last, the previous legislative session, is the More Learning, Less Testing Act of 2017, which kind of forced us, which was a good practice, to develop a district assessment committee, which involved, it was administration, supervisors, teachers, parents, and our teachers' association to all come together to really look at our, the tests that we, that are mandated throughout the school year. And, and the law requires that we be below 2.2% of instructional time, and we were below that in almost, in all areas. As far as, I'll give a couple of percentages, just so you know, in reference to the 2.2. Kindergarten is our smallest at like 0.3%. Third through fifth grade and those intermediate grades is about 1.6%. So, and in middle and high school, it kind of fluctuates depending on the year, but we're, we're well below the 2.2% cap, and, and the majority of those assessments, again, are formative, formative assessments that are beneficial in the classroom.
That group continues to meet, Rick?
Yes. The law says every two years, we will probably be reconvening every year, just even if it's only a check-in to make sure we're all on the same page.
It's something that teachers have been complaining a lot about, is doing too much testing.
Mm-hmm.
And you say we're maintaining the testing.
That's correct. Yep.
Is that, is that 2%, is that, do you say that's in reference to preparing for testing or testing?
That's testing. Instructional time, it's testing time during the instructional day.
Impact of the IAC?
Perceived impact.
Perceived impact.
Perceived impact of, of the newly formed interagency commission. As you know, it used to be a committee. A House Bill 1783, which just passed this previous legislative session, also known as the 21st Century School Facilities Act, basically created this new commission, and the commission has yet to meet for its first time. It's slated to meet on August the 30th. So, the jury's out as to whether or not, you know, it's going to be a, a good thing or a bad thing. However, we, we believe, we're believing positive things that are gonna come about as a result of the commission versus the former structure that existed with the committee, IAC Committee and the Board of Public Works. So we, the, the, just to give you a little bit of overview of what House Bill 1783 has done, it's formed this commission. It's a nine-member commission. Two of the members, or actually three of the members are state employees, the State Superintendent of Schools, who at this moment is the chair, Dr. Salmon, is the chair of that commission. The Secretary of Planning and the Secretary of General Services are also appointed on that commission. Then the governor can appoint two members. The President of the Senate can appoint two, and the Speaker of the House can appoint two members. At this point, there are eight members, there's one vacancy still. The Speaker of the House still has one more member to appoint, so that, that'll give the full slate of officers of the commission, nine members. As I mentioned, their first meeting is slated on the 30th of August, and they're supposed to meet on a monthly basis from that point forward. The commission will have enhanced responsibility for deciding school construction funding. In the past, basically, the committee made recommendations. Now the commission will make final decisions relative to how state aid is allocated to the, to the counties. The timelines are essentially the same. The commission is to approve The commission is to approve school construction projects at the final, at the following levels. Preliminary, 75% must be approved by December 31st of each year, and then the final 100% by May 1st of each year. So, the timelines are about the same as what the committee and the Board of Public Works operated under in the past, so that's not really changing. But, one of the other big things that the House bill does do is it establishes, for the first time, educational facilities sufficiency standards that are created for the purpose of measuring the, essentially, the facility's condition. And by July 1 of 2019, there is to be an evaluation of every school in the state of Maryland, and that report is to be presented to this commission as a result of that, of them hiring a consultant to perform these evaluations. Now, we believe we're in really good shape in Wycomico County. Ms. Ashby, our Director of Planning and Construction is on top of it. She's already been developing her, her and Mr. Aki, they're planning, a facilitator, and they have filled Facility Condition Index for every one of our facilities, and actually, they, we have been already working with the members of the staff that support the commission on providing information relative to these Facility Condition Index. So, we feel pretty good about it, and like I said, the jury's still out, but we think it's going to be a pretty good process.
Do you think that along with, you know, measuring the facility's conditions, that they might in this index, taking into consideration the quality of maintenance that has been done? Because I believe the reason this initially came about was that originally, I think that the governor or the comptroller, they were holding the certain districts' feet to the fire in reference to funding because, I guess, the maintenance was not really what they thought up to standards. Others, I guess maybe there was the feeling that maybe they didn't want to throw good money after bed. Do you think that this new index will still account for not just the condition, but the efforts towards maintenance?
Actually, the Facility Condition Index is basically a formula that takes the total cost to repair a facility and divides it by the replacement cost. So, it's a pretty simple formula. So, if you're not keeping the repairs up on a facility, those repair costs are going to be much higher, and that factor's going to be impacted by exactly what you're talking about. So, one of the things that they are going to start measure, and the staff from the commission have told us this, is that they're going to have various key performance indicators, and one of them is how much is a county spending per square foot on preventive maintenance. That's going to be a measure that I believe the state's going to hold all of the locals to in terms of reporting. We're going to have to start reporting those kind of key performance indicators to the state, and they're going to start measuring it and holding folks accountable.
At one time, the Board of Ed had summer maintenance crews where they did a lot of painting. They would hire teachers for the summer and students and, I think, even substitutes. What happened to that?
Well, because of all the requirements that's associated with painting, application of painting, and the whole issue of hazardous materials, we have brought that all under contract now, so all that's being done by contracted staff that have to meet certain criteria, so that's how that's working out.
So, that maintenance is still going on?
Oh, absolutely. Yep. We try to paint at least two schools every single summer, working on trying to do three, to be honest with you, Mr. Dyer.
I was just wondering whether we need to, you know, from a local perspective, whether we need to make sure that they would take, and if so, what proactive measures should be taken so that the rural counties make sure that they get as much of the benefit as is possible?
It's going to be, it's going to be key that our local delegation is aware of what our needs are, because I think it was in a meeting this morning, we reviewed the CIP submission with the board that is due to the county and to the state about October the 1st, so we were having a conversation about that, and that is, that is a concern, that this new, this new commission be attentive to not only the large jurisdictions across the bay, but the rural counties, you know, get their fair share of the pie. So, it's going to be key for us to keep our delegates and centers aware of what our needs are. I really believe that.
That was my biggest concern this morning, that, you know, we don't get overlooked.
Right.
You know, and that's, you know, I think that, from the meetings I've had in the state, you know, I think everybody's concerned.
Right.
Because they really haven't come out how they're going to do it yet. Until that comes out, we're all speculating, but I just don't want to get overlooked. But, you know, I know our delegation will work with us, and that's what it's all about.
Yeah, yeah, from what I understand, not alone either.
No, we're not.
We're at Meca, and a lot, you know, a lot of rural counties are expressing the same concern as to whether or not, whether a geographic index put in there or not, or whether it isn't put in there or not, I don't know how they're, I guess, like you said, we have to wait, see how it plays out.
Jury's out.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then, the last thing that we have on the agenda is coming back to the question that was raised, I believe in the spring of the year, about data from Warwick Community College, and Dr. Briggs has been working closely with Warwick and doing his own research and is going to provide you with some information.
First, I want to thank Council McIlmer for sharing that information with us, because honestly, I don't know if I would have ever dug this deep into the situation, so I appreciate it. The one of the, the number that was such alarming to Mr., to Council McIlmer and many of us was that 83.4% of students were entering Warwick not college-ready. So, inversely, that was only like 16.6% of students were entering Warwick, you know, ready, not having to take any remediation, remedial classes before earning credit. So, I did, I reached out to Kristen Mallory, or Dr. Mallory, the head of Academic Affairs at Warwick, and she was able to share some information with me and share some data with me. And before I get to that specifically, and Mr. Kilmer pointed it out in one of his correspondences with Mr. Palmer, was just that, obviously, we have different groups of students working through our system, and so there's different goals for each of our graduates. And so, just on average, I want to just speak in pretty holistic terms, we have about 50 to 55% of our students who attend a four-year college after graduation. Okay? Separate from that, we have about 20% that attend a two-year college such as Warwick, 10% directly enter the workforce, and then a small percentage also enter the military or attend specialized school or training. So, again, about 20% of our students are going to community colleges such as Warwick. And Dr. Mallory was able to share specific data with me from 2016 and 2017, the two most recent years, and these are the percentage of our students, just Wycomicos, who were deemed college-ready when they walked into the doors at Warwick, meaning they did not need any remedial classes and were taking credits immediately. And so, in 2017, 64% of our Wycomico County students were deemed college-ready in reading, and that number was lower in math, but in math in 2017, it was 32%. Okay? So, those are the students from Wycomico County that actually go and enroll at Warwick, and those, that percentage is, again, the 64 and 32 were deemed ready for college, and so were able to jump right in, taking college credit.
Now, on that, and I've talked with Dr. Hoy about this, that there was some disjunction or something like that between the math requirements upon graduation of high school and the math requirements for Warwick, is that?
That is, that is true.
And he said that there was state efforts to make the systems align, so how was, so his thought was that number of college-ready would be increasing as high, as high school requirements and college entrance requirements aligned? Is that going on?
Yeah, so Dr. Hoy is exactly correct. There is a difference, especially in math, specifically around Algebra II. Okay? So, Warwick uses Algebra II PRC, that summative assessment at the end of the year for Algebra II. They use that as one of their indicators for college readiness for math. However, Algebra II is not a state-mandated course, and many of our students don't take Algebra II. And the vast majority of students who do take Algebra II, those are the ones that are going to a four-year college or university. And so, there's a disconnect there. It still exists. I'm hopeful, as Dr. Hoy was, that we have improvement in that area, but there's still a disconnect in that.
I appreciate you looking at those numbers.
No problem.
How much coordination does the school system have with Warwick? Because when, we've met with him several times, talking about the Economic Development Scholarship, and he indicated that we really didn't work with Warwick.
I feel like we have a growing partnership, as Dr. Hanlon mentioned earlier, like with the expansion of our dual enrollment to an early college program. I would like to say it's ever strengthening would be the word. I know my relationship over the last year with Dr. Mallory, and we both kind of came into our new positions at the same time. I know we meet pretty much on a monthly or bimonthly basis and talk about things, so it's not where we want it to be, but I would say it's continuing to strengthen.
But, that's just for the kids that want to get a degree before or obtain a lot of advanced college credits and advanced placement?
Most of the, most of the focus is on our existing students and not post-graduate, that's correct.
Right, and I was just wondering how many we're working with Dr. Hoy or Warwick to get them ready to at least enter Warwick, not the advanced placement-type students?
Right, yeah. That's definitely an area we can grow, and just in talking like with the math, I mean, there's some of those assessments that they give on their end that we could possibly, like Accuplacer is one of their assessments that they use for the, to determine math readiness. Well, that's not something that we use at all and does not align with our instructional program whatsoever, so that's where that disconnect that Mr. Kilmer pointed out. And so, hopefully, by continuing to strengthen our relationship, we can be more aligned and make sure that more, a higher percentage of our students are deemed ready by them.
And I think that relationship between Dr. Mallory and Dr. Briggs is just the beginning. The conversations that need to be going on are between our curriculum supervisors and their department heads or whatever their, you know, I don't have the right terminology, but in content areas, so we're looking at what's taught, what's being assessed to create better alignment.
Because I think it's a good idea getting most of the students in the public school system ready for college, whether they decide to go right away or not.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I think that the goal should be, no matter what their goal is, post-graduation of, you know, high school, that they're successful in a four-year college or two-year college or the workforce, and if, you know, a third of the students going into Warwick, you know, don't meet the reading standards, you know, math is slightly different, you know, that, you know, that's not, doesn't set them up for success at, you know, for, over those two years at Warwick. So, I mean, you know, we, you know, there's definitely problems with college persistence through a two-year college, but if they can be better readers when they go in there, that, I mean, it's all, you're part of a larger system, and I think working with Warwick better to figure out ways to do that.
And I would think that once we implement universal pre-K, that percentage will go up.
Well, yeah, I mean, this is, you know, after 12 years of school, or 13 years of school, you know, if they're.
That's what it takes.
So, but, yeah, I mean, I mean, the goal is to, I mean, you know, have students in Wycomico County be the best educated in the state. I mean, I think that's what we're all working for, and we all play a role here, so.
Yes, we do.
I appreciate you trying to work with Warwick, Warren, let's figure this out.
No problem.
That was good to hear.
Keep you posted.
Yeah.
Very good.
So, let me, I'll just conclude unless you have any other questions, that we hope to see you at our kickoff next week. You know, we're celebrating our 150th. You celebrated yours already as a county, now the school system came shortly after that. So, we're, we are, our theme this year with the kickoff at the Civic Center next Thursday morning is birthday celebration, happy birthday to us, games and cake.
And what time would that come for the public?
Presents and, what?
What time for the public?
It is at 9:00.
9:00 AM?
The doors open at 8:00. Doors open at 8:00, and we're finished by 10:00, 10:30. It's quick, but celebration to launch the school year.
We have 8:30 here.
8:30.
So, it'll be good. I had neglected to, can't believe I did, I neglected to put anything in this discussion about CTE or public-private partnerships. But, I guess we're probably going to, I don't want to belabor this meeting, but, I mean, that's personally my highest priority, is seeing how we're expanding on the CTE programs and public-private partnerships. So, it's going to have to be for another day because of my mistake, maybe we'll have to schedule it in two weeks or something, I don't know.
But, I think it's something we've already been looking at.
Right.
You know, it's, that's nothing new to us. I think the biggest thing is expanding is having a place to expand, so.
Right.
You know, but there's, there, I know Rick and Dr. Hanlon are looking at this, and I know as a board, that's our objective too.
Okay, well, I definitely have it on the agenda the next quarter when we get together, so we can, you know, spend some time kind of seeing what goals are set and.
Well, the CTE Committee meets twice during the school year, and they have all of their partners there as well.
Pac meetings.
Once in the spring and once in the fall.
That's correct.
But, we'd be happy to talk about that.
Great, great. Would any of the other board members in the back, would you like to make any comments or anything? It's taken the time to be here. Grab that podium, John, if you'd like to. Not that we didn't anticipate you would, maybe we'll have some say, John.
I might want to add one or two things.
Alan or Michael will be, you know, quite welcome, or Dean.
They'll love you.
Okay, thank you, John.
John Palmer, board member. I'd just like to let you know that over the weekend at the county fair, the Board of Education had a tent there, Mr. Butler initiated that, I was with him Saturday and Sunday, and I can tell you, it was a great success. We had a lot of people stop by, ask questions. We had a number of teachers from other places who were asking about Wycomico County. We give them, we took their names, we gave them the numbers, who to contact, had a lot of people asking them about kindergarten, and it was just a great get-together. And, Dr. Hanlon, I'd like to challenge CTE to come up with a cooling system for that tent out there, because it was extremely hot out there. So, I figure a few solar panels and some small fans donated by our businesses in the county, working with CTE, getting it together and highlighting it at our stand would work out great, so maybe we'd get a little help with that. Progress on kindergarten, let me tell you, one of the best ways to measure progress, you can wait for third grade to do their reading. Go in on the first day, the first couple of days, watch the classes, and then go back in about three months, and you'll see the difference, how the teachers will structure these young students and get them to, get them in line to where they are able to learn. And that's really a great way of seeing progress in the students, so.
I think you're right, John. Not until you actually go in those classrooms and see how it's being done hands-on, do you get a really full effect of just how good a program it is.
And, Mark, I want to thank you for keeping up with that, the work going on with Warwick, with the numbers and the testing and all, because that's one of my areas that I want to get involved in also, so thank you for your work on that.
I appreciate your, our back and forth on this and keeping it on the, everybody's high priority, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Good afternoon. My name is Alan Brown. I just want to comment that I've been a part of the education system in Wycomico County practically all of my life. I had my background here from first grade through 12th grade and went on to college and then came back and spent a 40-year career in public education. And one of the things that I've noticed in working with the county council, that the relationship between the school system and the county council has grown, and I think it's going to continue to grow, and I think right now it's at the best point it's ever been in working together. We talk about working with Warwick and the school system. I think also the county council has done a great job of that. Meeting with you like this does give both an opportunity to ask the kinds of questions that you have on your mind or to kind of interact with the comments that you heard from public people that you talked to, and then you can hear from us as well. The other thing is, and Mr. Palmer just kind of mentioned it, one of the things I think we need to kind of focus in on a little bit more is the CTE program, because, let's face it, all kids are not going to go to college.
That's right.
And if you have a plumber come to your house lately, or electrician come to your house lately, you know that those people do very well as in the trades. So, again, house lately, you know that those people do very well as in the trades. So again, I thank each one of you for all that you do for us and the working relationship that we have. I hope it continues to grow.
So is the plumbing program back in the school?
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Not yet?
Not yet.
Okay. Because that was one of our biggest concerns for the last two or three years.
Well, come on, I'm an HVA senior.
Right.
The work, Dr. Briggs, if you prepare for it, Mr. Kilmer, would you have a PDF of that, that you could supply the council? I'd like to see that. The data looked kind of interesting.
Yep, you got it.
Anything else? No? Gene, it's your last chance. And Michael's the last.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Great. Okay. All right. Eric, change the motion to adjourn?
So move a second.
On favor. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.